Good evening. My name is Daniel Page. I am the Waterways Program Chief for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. I have a few colleagues with me here tonight from DEP. First, we have Stephanie Mora, who's the Division Director for the Well and Waterways Division. I have Pamela Harvey. Pam is a longtime and valued technical expert at DEP, having worn many hats over the years. And we have Alice Doyle. Alice is a Regional Planner and Waterways Application Reviewer in the Boston practice. This is the public hearing of the draft regulations that the department published back in December. This is what we affectionately call Water Resilience 1.0. This is the department's first amendment to the waterways regulations to specifically address climate resilience, climate change, sea level rise, inland impacts to climate change as well. This is 1.0. There is a 2.0 on the way, and we will be asking for everyone's help as we define, refine, and decide what goes into Resiliency 2.0. As I said, this is a public hearing tonight. This is a little different than some of the public hearings that anyone of you may have attended that I have run reviewing individual applications. This will be a traditional public hearing. We will review a brief slide presentation, which summarizes the changes that the department is proposing to the regulations. We will present the schedule for the public review process, how to submit comments, the deadline for submitting comments, and then we will accept verbal testimony from anyone who chooses to. We have a chat running. That chat is used for a couple of things. First off, I asked that my colleagues place a couple of links in that chat. One link being the DEP's website for comment opportunities, specifically the waterways. So you'll be able to click on that link and take you right there. At that link are also copies of, well, they'll, earlier today, we had a public hearing on this matter. That will be posted. The recording of this evening hearing will be posted. There are presently two public information sessions recordings there. There are copies of the proposed regulations and a summary of the proposed regulations, all of those available for download, and presentations that were made at those sessions. So we're going to go through a few several slides. I have 14. We're going to go through those slides in relatively short order, and then we will take testimony. And there's the agenda. I think I got that in the right order. That's what we're going to do tonight. The topic of resiliency, climate change, sea level rise, there are so many things, so many ways it's been described. Simply put, it is an incredible challenge to the Commonwealth. It is an incredible challenge to the citizens of the Commonwealth, businesses, private, all manner of citizens, all manner of businesses. And you can see a quote there from an executive order recently issued. That's why we're here. As I said, this is Resiliency, our Resiliency 1.0 regulations. As part of these proposed amendments, we have selected a few critically important things to change. The first and most important one, at least in the coastal environment, is that presently the waterways regulations require any project seeking an extended term license to consider historical sea level rise. We are updating that so that any project seeking the license must consider projected sea level rise. So we've expanded from just non-water dependent uses for extended terms to all applications for licenses, and we've moved to the projected sea level rise requirement. There are updates in these regulations relating to certain building considerations. We have updated regulations, updated some definitions to be consistent with FEMA. We have identified a way to encourage the relocation of building utilities, building systems, et cetera, to the rooftop. And we hope that that will also encourage the installation of rooftop solar. Among my favorite changes to these regulations is the third one you see on the screen. This is a very specifically clarifying an existing exemption for certain activities within non-tidal rivers and streams. It is our goal in making these changes to facilitate an abundance of climate resiliency projects, most particularly culvert replacement, certain dam repair activities, et cetera. Again, that is not a new, we're not creating a new exemption. We're clarifying some of the ambiguity that exists within the current regulation. The next few slides provide just a little bit more detail on the various sections that we're updating here, starting at the beginning of the regulations. We're updating several definitions. We've deleted coastal high hazard. We've added several other definitions that are more specific and better define some of these criteria. Your attention, if you're a Chapter 91 practitioner, your attention may be drawn to primary frontal dune and wonder if the 91 program will start regulating primary frontal dunes. That's not the case. We're including definitions that are contained within, for instance, velocity zone contains the definition, these are words, primary frontal dune. We chose to include that definition rather than leave them hanging. In our efforts to require all licenses, all license applications to consider projected sea level rise, we've made change to several sections. You can see three of them cited here. The fourth bullet here directs applicants, the regulated community, and everyone else to resilient mass as a clearinghouse for the current and best information relating to sea level rise, climate change in Massachusetts. When you go to the red line, you will see this is not the exclusive location where one may get information regarding sea level rise, climate change. That is the first choice. The regulation change that we're seeking allows for other credible sources to be used as well. When considering what change we would make, we decided, very specifically decided, not to set a specific elevation standard, because as soon as we selected that, that data would change, the best information would change. So we've selected resilient mass and other credible sources as the place to go for what elevation should we be designing to, et cetera. Another section where we're making a small change to require predicted sea level rise consideration is for an extended term license. For the last four and a half years, my favorite section of the regulation has been the, quote, "other relevant factors to be considered" when considering whether a project should get an extended term license. We have, for those last four and a half years at least, considered other relevant factors to be predicted sea level rise. We want to be clear in the regulations what that means. So we're adding predicted sea level rise as a consideration for extended terms. There have been some changes to the engineering construction standard references, specifically with regard to FEMA, specifically again with regard to what projects must consider sea level rise. And the answer now is, any project seeking lists. Last two changes that we've made. The first one, conservation capacity for water dependent use. This is very specifically the height requirements. Waterways practitioners now, you know, now know that the current regulations allow you to put mechanicals on the roof. That's nothing new. However, if you put those mechanicals on the roof and they need to be in enclosure, in some municipalities, that would effectively increase the height of a building and therefore would affect how tall it'd be, how many floors you get in the building, et cetera. The department, after consideration, has decided that we want to encourage moving those facilities to the roof. So by eliminating, by being clear, that moving such facilities to the roof will not affect building height as that height is considered in the waterways regulations, we hope to encourage movement of more of those facilities to the roof and also facilitate rooftop solar. The last change here, you'll see, this is the non-tidal rivers and streams, again, clarifying existing exemptions. Specific information on this is many of those culvert replacements are not subject to Chapter 91 because the culverts are way too small to be navigable. And it's very clear that they're not jurisdictional. However, in order to effect the replacement of those culverts, work is required upstream and downstream, at least to a small degree. That creates ambiguity in the regulations presently as to whether that work itself is exempt or not. It is the department's intent to clarify that exemption, to facilitate those culvert replacements, provided it meets certain standards, does not reduce the space available for navigation, et cetera. I think that is among the better, one of the more important changes we're making here to serve many municipalities and hopefully make a big difference quickly. That's the end of the technical slides I have for you. This is the schedule of where we've been and where we are. There were public regulations published in December. Public comments are due on March 1st. We've had a couple of public information sessions. Today is the second of two scheduled public hearings in this matter. We ask that public comments be submitted in writing. We've got, they can be submitted preferably by email. See the email address there. I believe this email, this address is probably already in the chat by now. If you can't submit electronically, you're more than welcome to submit copies, comments in writing on paper and to the address shown there. When you're preparing your comments, please consider the changes that we're proposing here as Resiliency 1.0. But please do not hesitate to offer suggestions, what you would like to see in Resiliency 2.0. What are the other pieces? We have a long list, and we would like to hear from anyone and everyone about their concerns, about the comments and suggestions for Resiliency 2.0. That is a separate process. We've been working on that, and as we transition from Resiliency 1.0 to Resiliency 2.0, you will be hearing more about that. That is my brief presentation for this public hearing. I will turn the floor over to Stephanie to see if we have any folks who'd like to submit verbal comments.
Thank you, Daniel, and welcome, everybody, and thank you for taking part of your evening to join us for this public hearing. In the chat is our protocol for this evening, and for those who aren't good at navigating the chat, I will just say it out loud. For those who would like to offer oral testimony at this hearing tonight, please add your name and your affiliation to the chat. You can also raise your hand. And then what we'll do is allow each person three minutes to offer up their oral testimony. And assuming we are able to, with that protocol, get through all the folks who would like to offer testimony, we can then circle back and catch up with folks who had to abbreviate their testimony with the three minutes. We just want to make sure that everybody who wants to has a chance. And again, as Daniel mentioned, we also encourage people who are offering oral testimony to also submit written testimony via the methods that Daniel described and that are posted in the chat. So with that, we currently have, first up in the chat to offer testimony is Jamie Medea, Buchanan and Associates.
Thank you very much, and thank you all. You've been extraordinarily responsive to questions, and I'm extremely grateful for that. Also want to take a moment to compliment you. Just DEP Waterways, unbelievable turnaround with answers on everything. It's just wonderful. Thank you. Now, that said, my comments are my own only, not on behalf of anybody else, because frankly, there has been inadequate time. Boards that meet monthly have not been able to meet. These regulations weren't just issued in December. They were issued on December 22nd, when there were a large number of people mercifully attempting to go to bed for a week or whatever it was they wanted to do. So there's a lot of people who didn't even catch on there was something this big coming. I understand this is just waterways, but it relates to all the other, three other regulatory programs that came out at the same time, same press release, same concepts, or same impacts for some of them. I'm going to try to confine this just to the waterways, but you made the mistake of inviting 2.0 comments, so I'm going to try to do that at the same time. Sorry?
Please continue. Thank you for that.
Number one, we need to know, I need to know, what is adequately considered? Frequently asked, frequently asked questions ought to be put out before March 1st so people have an understanding of what is intended by adequately consider sea level rise. Will it be enough to have an engineering stamp from a licensed engineer that the project as proposed, or the renewal of a license, has adequately considered and can, for the duration of a license term, for example, be modified, although potentially at great expense? Or will there be something else? Next thing, so basically, what does adequately consider mean, but especially in relation to a renewal of existing licenses, whether they're traditional licenses or amnesty licenses? And frankly, that's enormous. We can't get renewed financing to do the sea level rise accommodation that we all want to do if nobody knows if you're going to be able to get a license. So that's a very big deal. Number two, and number two, will MEPA be needed in order to view, to be reviewed, in order to be adequately considered on sea level rise? FYI, MEPA review is now adding about $50,000 in expense from engineering and other related permitting firms. Because the areas are often within one mile to five miles of an EJ, environmental justice population, so an entire EIR is needed, and they're offering scope to work at $50,000 just for MEPA, not even getting through wetlands and waterways. Third issue of biggest concern is not the waterways itself, but it's how waterways imports in its term adequate, oh, excuse me, complete application, the issue of needing to have an order of conditions already from one of the highly disparate local conservation commissions, which means that there is no license renewal unless a conservation commission agrees. Maybe you can appeal it to a DEP regional office, but that still isn't clear whether you're going to get your license renewed, because you have to have the order of conditions. So you're looking at, from my personal perspective, a massive impact on all the water dependent users because they don't know how they're going to get their licenses renewed. Final, unclear to me how this, if at all, changes emergency order standards. I really hope emergency orders will get issued so that, because you have to apply afterwards anyway. Final point was that, and we have so much technical knowledge to offer you. It hurts our feelings when you don't ask us. Please let people, not just me, I mean, real people, technical people, engineers, design specialists, we know what to do. They know what to do. Please ask and let's meet and talk instead of popping it out as one big package, blowing the tops of our head off in the same month. So this one day of public hearing, I'm sorry, I can't do more. I'll do more in writing, but thank you very much. That's it. And thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. The next, the next person who has asked to provide testimony is Anthony Vivenzio.
Hi. Thank you for taking my testimony here. The first item that I wanted to cover of three items is, so Mass Resilient Design Standards indicate the use of the RCP 8.5 scenario. And that scenario has been viewed as increasingly improbable and quite divergent from measured values. Some would view that as scientific and policy malpractice to use such an implausible scenario. We found this out when we did a deep dive in one of the MVP committees with that. So is there any plans to look at more realistic climate scenarios for use in public policy and planning? That's the first topic. The second topic just concerns the text of the regulations. So there is some language that says, this is in 10.24, the general provisions. The issuing authority shall confirm the project will not cause an increase in flood, velocity, volume, or elevation on other properties resulting in storm damage. So, you know, would that mean that someone who has an NOI that's looking to do, you know, to add some material, excuse me for a minute, to do some beach nourishment, would have to basically have all of their neighbors involved in that project in order to meet that standard? It seems like that is overly broad language and could end up really discouraging any kind of nourishment projects. The third area of concern is that, let's see, it says that the issuing authority should require projects to be designed to protect or enhance resource areas or other coastal engineering structures to use, let's see, what does it say? Essentially, natural methods or materials. And my concern here, oh yeah, it says, through natural methods and materials as an alternative to coastal engineering structures. So my concern here is if coastal engineers come up with a particular structure that they feel from an engineering standpoint is required, it seems like this language is overly broad and allows the regulatory body to just simply override that engineering judgment without any due process or recourse. And there are several examples that I can think of where this kind of situation has resulted in less resiliency. Those are my comments.
Let me just interject for one moment and say thank you for those comments. I believe, and it's no surprise that there may be some confusion, I believe that your comments relate to the proposed wetlands regulations and not to the Chapter 91 Waterways Regulations. I will put a link in the chat in just a second that has information about the, in parallel, the proposed regulations for wetlands. The link will include all the information about the proposed changes, recordings and materials from the three public information sessions that were held in the previous week or so, and registration information for the upcoming public hearings for that regulation package. The two are interrelated but quite distinct from the scope of their issues, and so I just want to make sure that we're directing you to the right spot so that your input can be heard. So I appreciate that.
Good. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no worries. And next up, scrolling through, we have Randall Lyons.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I guess I was certainly not prepared from a testimonial standpoint, but first and foremost, my name is Randall Lyons. I'm the Executive Director for the Massachusetts Marine Trades Association. Our trade association represents the recreational boating industry in Massachusetts. And first of all, I want to kind of focus on the economic impact of the recreational boating industry in Massachusetts. Overall, we represent an economic impact of $5 billion. We have over 1,000 businesses in Massachusetts and approximately 18,000 employees. In Massachusetts, there are approximately 130,000 registered boats and about 10,000 documented boats. So from an impact standpoint and the business standpoint, it is a significant impact within our industry, and these new proposed regulations are very concerning to our member businesses. I will admit, I'm coming from an educational conference today, which is our largest educational conference of the year, attended by 175 member businesses. The Massachusetts Marine Trades Association is represented by Buchanan and Associates. I know you're familiar with Jamie and her testimony already. We are fortunate to have Jamie on our side. She is learning this bill as we all are, but Jamie knows it a heck of a lot more than I do, and certainly more than our businesses know currently especially. So we're learning it. We're going through the process. Some quick points that I wanted to just make up. Again, I focused on the industry and the businesses that are concerned. Already, we have issues with financing right now. Our businesses who are looking potentially to rebuild, to expand, to do new docks, new facilities, there's already struggles on that front. Putting in more regulations, putting in more requirements. I understand the environmental standpoint, and we all want to make sure that we focus on that, especially within the recreational boating industry. But at the same time, we want to be able to run our businesses. My members are extremely concerned on that front because this could be a huge negative blow to them at a time where boating is already restricted, and there's already very limited access in the state. So it's a big concern. And again, this, again, we're learning it. We're going through this process. We appreciate the opportunity here, but I just want to express the concerns that we're hearing from the recreational boating industry businesses. I will say one of the major concerns is related to the focus and the potential that conservation committees and conservation groups on a town by town basis are going to be making some of these regulations. And the insurance companies working with our member businesses, having a conservation committee make one determination in one town and a different determination in another town is very frightening to us. So that's a, that's a big concern for sure. Talking to some of our insurance companies who are also our member businesses, that was one of the things that was brought up. If they approve a rebuild of a marina or boatyard or whatever it may be, and then the conservation commission says, we're not going to allow that. What happens then? So that's, that's a big concern. So again, as we learn, continue to learn more about this. This was a big presentation earlier today, our educational conference, but I do appreciate the opportunity to testify here and look forward to learning more about this. But we do hope that the door remains open for our industry, for our association, for Buchanan and Associates, and for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Randall.
That was exactly three minutes. You must have practiced that in front of the mirror. Thank you.
I had to be very efficient at my conference today, so.
I want to remind, there's several folks who have joined us while, while folks have been offering testimony. So let's just review that in the chat, you will find links to Master EP's website that has information about the Chapter 91 Waterways. It's 310 CMR9, Proposed Regulations that are the topic of tonight's hearing. That link will take you to information from recent public information sessions where you can view recordings with question and answer. You can see the presentation. The chat also has the protocol, if you will, for offering testimony tonight, and I'll just repeat that. Folks are asked to put their name and affiliation in the chat if you would like to deliver or offer oral testimony tonight. We're asking folks to keep their initial remarks to three minutes, and if we get through everybody who would like to speak, and we have additional time, then we will certainly go back for those who had to abbreviate their remarks. And then finally, because we like to confuse people when we can, we have another set of regulations out with a parallel timeframe. It's actually an economy of scale, if you will, because many of the interested stakeholders have interest in both the wetlands regulation package that's out, as well as the topic of tonight, which is the Waterways Check and 91. So also in the chat, there is a link to the separate Wetlands Resilience 1.0 Proposed Regulations. Information from those, materials from those public information sessions, and information about how to register for the public hearings for that set of rigs, which are happening next week. Okay. With that, I'm scrolling back through the chat and not seeing any other folks who have asked to offer testimony. So, oh, there we go. That brings them out. Mary Kate Schneewais?
You got it. Hi, Mary Kate Schneewais.
Hi, Mary Kate Schneewais. I'm a senior environmental planning specialist at Beals and Thomas. Just a couple very brief remarks. First, I absolutely echo everything Jamie said about the renewal of existing licenses and the ambiguity that the proposed wording presents for the purposes of people who already own structures subject to chapter ninety one licensing. My second observation is that I believe the definition of primary frontal dune is consistent with that defined in the Wetlands Protection Act. And just given the order of operations in which a permit typically or permitting typically goes, I think it would be helpful to get some clarity on what authority is responsible for determining the boundary of the primary frontal dune, which if I'm interpreting the regulations correctly, would be the Conservation Commission. Just to make sure those two processes aren't conflicting with each other. And third, just a comment for wetlands or waterways two point O resiliency. There is some language in the geographic areas subject to jurisdiction about non-title river and streams. And the jurisdictional trigger is a streams on which public funds have been expended for stream clearance. And states that the department may publish a list of navigable rivers and streams. Functionally, I think it's very difficult to tell whether or not public funds have been expended on a stream. And to my knowledge, the department has not published a list of navigable, navigable rivers. So as you are expanding the jurisdiction of these covert projects, it might be very helpful to have some guidance as to or, you know, clarify that guidance. Functionally, we assume everything is, is navigable in the current landscape. And that's all the comments that I had.
Thank you. Tom McShane.
Great. Thank you very much, Stephanie. I appreciate it. My name's Tom McShane. Great to see PM Harvey and several others. And I work at Dewey Square Group. I do a variety of different projects for clients. And the two points that I just wanted to make, number one, that I appreciate the changes that you've proposed here in one point O. Particularly, I am thrilled with the requirement to use projected sea level rise as opposed to historical sea level rise. So that to me is a huge plus for us. I don't have any problems with these changes, but my second comment is they don't go far enough. And I'm looking forward to two point O. Particularly what I'm concerned with is that having grown up with the Wetlands Act and chapter ninety one and water quality certifications to a lesser extent. We designed those programs appropriately to keep things out of the resource areas. And now we realize that because of sea level rise and global climate change, we have to put things into these resource areas to protect our shoreline. And I'm particularly looking forward to seeing how DEP can manage that transition from keeping things out to allowing particularly nature-based solutions for resiliency into these resource areas. It's not easy because we're turning things a little bit one eighty. But I encourage you to keep going forward. So thank you for these, and I look forward to the next iteration.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. I want to be sure that we don't rely only on the chat function to make sure we cast a wide net for anybody who would like to offer testimony. So please, if the chat function is not your forte, just unmute yourself and, and let us know that you would like to speak, or you can, if you like clicking buttons in your toolbar, you can also use the button in the toolbar that says raise hand, and that may be in that may be in, under different tabs for different people. So you can either zoom, raise your hand. You can click your little microphone. There we go. Marie Hayward, she got it.
Thank you, Stephanie. That instruction. My name is Marie Hayward. I've been involved in the marine industry for forty five years in Massachusetts. And I, I can let some people use my three minutes for sure. I am concerned. I, I try to file through the regulations. I need more time to do that. I need some expertise to help me figure them out. But I will say one of the things that concerned me is the lack of other members of the marine industry and the, the development of these regulations. From what I can see, only the Massachusetts Association of the Conservation Commissions had some input and maybe some watershed association. And I think that the stakes are high here all around. And that other members of the marine community, the boating community, other stakeholders in the process should be brought in. We need more time. I know the regulations came out in late December, I think December twenty second to be exact. I was probably doing the Christmas thing. I was aware of them after the first of the year. I am concerned that other members, other stakeholders in this, not just in the marine community, need to be brought in and can, we need to hear them. They need to contribute. And I'd like to see that happen. I will conclude my testimony with that.
Thank you, Marie. I see no additional names in the chat. I don't see any Zoom version of a raised hand, the little button in your in your toolbar. So we're just going to sit here in a comfortable silence for a moment and wait. Oh, there we go. See another hand from Jamie Medea.
Uh, thank you. I'll be very brief. Since we're, we have an opening here. I want to second what Tom McShane said. This is a, there are multiple now very old programs in making the first in forty years revisions to them collectively to address sea level rise, and I'm leaving out like calling a, a wind tower water dependent. That's, that's not the type of change I'm talking about. I mean, major, major, major changes. To do these collectively, it does require a change in thought process. It is not prohibiting or should not be, in my opinion, this is personal. It should not be prohibiting to let nature do its thing. It should be protecting both the resource areas and the places that are already there. So a managed retreat makes people's skin crawl when they're not actually in the business of environmental studies. They think of that as I give up. And that is doubled down in these collective regulations as if it's not within our means or our abilities to handle sea level rise. It is. And I believe that including engineering and including new materials that will develop over time and are already in use in the chapter ninety one program we're adequately considering. And in the wetlands program rather than prohibiting would be smart. I'll end on that. And also the observation that we have a lot better examples than were used in the information sessions of Sandy Hook. Oh, and I, I lied. One more. I did public finance before I went to law school. And I know what credit agencies care about. And they're going to care a lot more about no ability to stay in business all up and down the coast than they are about the ability to use technology and engineering to safely stay in business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. We, earlier today, we allowed ourselves this comfortable silence for a moment and just while everybody sort of ruminates and we'll just sit here for a bit. The lines open and see if there's anybody else who wants to use this opportunity to offer some, some comment.
Stephanie, we have, we have, we have a, someone in the question and answer, Porting, or record, Marie Howard or Hayward, excuse me, wanted to make a comment.
She was clever. She, she found her way to Q and A instead of chat. So Marie, did you have something else you want to?
Thank you. Uh, no, I was, I've already made my comments. I, and thank you for thinking of me. Once again.
Daniel, maybe while we are seeing if anybody else wants to step forward, one of us could try to get that final slide.
Did you want to view my, the historic map collection? Is that what you're asking for? I will show the last slide.
Yes, yes, please. Yes, yes. Oh, I love that.
That was, sadly, that's not queued up for the moment.
Don't humor him, Jamie.
I will, I will share that the clumsy way. As I said, the clumsy way.
Folks may not be able to quite see that, but it's in, it's in presenter mode instead of
Who did that?
Don't we love technology?
I wasn't selected for my technical prowess.
All right, I don't see any additional raised hands or unmuted microphones or anything in the chat. So Daniel, I, I think it's safe to conclude. You want to wrap it up?
Thank you all again for, for attending this evening, but also for your diligence and some of you have been to multiple information sessions and multiple hearings, and I thank you for that. And I will thank you in advance for your thoughtful written comments so that we can take those comments into consideration. And with regard to two point O, I am sincere. I would love to see specific suggestions. Send me your white papers. You can send me red line regulations. You can send me your suggestions, send me anything you'd like. This is a, this chat, the challenges of climate change, sea level rise, et cetera, are significant. Three people, these three people here from DEP are not going to solve the problem. It's going to take all of us. And I, again, I welcome participation. I welcome suggestions. I welcome discussion. Thank you.
Am I, am I too late to the dance to say something?
Never too late. You have the floor, Kevin.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I've been listening in. I came in just a few minutes late. And I made myself just a brief explanation of my position in regards to where I live and how I feel this might affect us. I live in a community that is basically in a velocity zone on a barrier beach. And I'm concerned that the changes may adversely affect the property owners in a negative way. So my question for you at DEP is how does DEP expect to balance property owner rights on coastal properties with beach nourishment, both private with orders of conditions and public efforts in cases where retreat is maybe not desired or in the best interest? So in other words, as sea levels rise, are we just going to abandon these areas and abandon those property owners? Or is there any effort at all at the state level to try and help them in some fashion, whether it be monetarily or through beach nourishment?
Thank you, Kevin.
That's all I have, and I just would be love to hear what your comments are because I'm in a unique situation right now due to the last few storms. And I can't, there's not enough time here to elaborate on everything. But we're taking steps to privately through our NOIs that exist and our beach nourishment rights as property owners to try and protect what's left of our property. And in a municipality that already seems to be thinking retreat, we're on our own. And we'd like to know if we're going to continue to be on our own. So that way we know that we can prepare accordingly. Whether it be our own beach nourishment or other actions that need to be taken in the future. We want to work with municipalities and the Department of Environmental Protection. But it seems like no one wants to hear our cause. But thank you. We've got a town that's trying to take our land.
Kevin, this, this is not by way of a response as this is a public hearing and I hate to sound like a bureaucrat. I just want to make sure that you there was another gentleman earlier this evening. I, I want to make it clear that we have a couple of sets of proposed regulations that are out for public comment, having to do with improving the Commonwealth's resilience to the effects of climate change and, and, and several of your comments in your statement tonight make me think that you might also be very interested in the Wetlands Protection Act proposed regulations that we have out. And there are links in the chat there to information about those or materials from those public information sessions where you can hear the question and answer. We recorded it and it's posted. And there are public hearings next week on that set of proposed regulations. Not necessarily what you want to spend all your you know, leisure time doing, attending public hearings, but I just want to make sure you're aware that there, there is another relevant regulation package out relevant to your interests.
Well, well, I appreciate that knowledge. I only found out about this forum today. So you know, I, I had to at least get in it on it, see what it is. Because in my efforts to gather as much information as possible to protect our interests, I, you know, I'm trying to find out what's going on with these new proposed regulations so I can understand them, bring them back to the people that I'm responsible to, so we can make better, well-informed decisions going forward in regards to the coastal community, the resiliency, beach nourishment. And again, you know, property rights versus municipalities' rights and so on and so forth. So you know, I, I want to engage and be active because this is everybody's problem from the property owner right up to the, to the politician in regards to how are we going to treat you know, climate change? How are we going to treat property owners who are affected by climate change? You know, the, these are things that, you know, decisions are made that affects people's lives on a daily basis, and sometimes it's not in a positive way. So I'd like to thank you people for giving me the opportunity to at least be heard and for the information to look forward to the, the next hearings.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And in that time, we do have another person who would like to offer comments, and that's Dr. McGlinsey from Mass Association of Conservation Commissions.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, everyone from DEP. I appreciate your hard work. These are not my formal comments. We, Mass Association Conservation Commissions will be submitting formal comments on all three reg packages. My comment tonight is to echo what some have said both tonight and in other info sessions and in other hearings. There's a lot of information for people to digest. There are a lot of folks along the coast that don't, still don't know about these regulations. There are a lot of municipalities that are still just catching up to speed to start re-reviewing the regulations. I am suggesting that Mass DEP consider an additional info session. an additional info session for all sets of regs in addition, another hearing later next month. I know your time is valuable. I know you've spent a lot of time in this, and I I thank you very much for it, but it's also a lot for people to digest. Finally, we will be submitting probably a formal request in the near term for an extension to the deadline of at least some of these comments. There are a lot of things coming up for those who are impacted by these regulations, including an annual meeting the day after the comments are due. So we may be submitting a formal request for an extension. I've been hearing other groups possibly asking for that. But in the meantime, during the next month, please consider another info session and another hearing to potentially branch out to other people who have not heard enough about these regulations. But thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for your comments. See, it always pays to sit through a comfortable silence for a moment. Those were two very glad we got those two comments in. I do not see, I've said this three times now, I do not see any additional folks who have put their name in the chat who would like to speak nor raised hands nor unmuted microphones. All right. I think that's a wrap for the evening.
Okay, once again, thank you, everyone. I strongly encourage you to go to the department's website. If you, it's in the chat, but how I go there, I Google Mass DEP comment opportunities every single time. That's how I go there. So you will find it. It'll be the top of your search search list. And you can find the waterways regulations, proposed amendments, the wetlands proposed amendments. If you click on the right, click on those links, it'll take you to the additional information. The information sessions, as Stephanie said, where we did question and answer and copies of presentations and copies of the regulations, proposed regulations or changes are all on that website. I don't have anything further, except please submit your comments and writing.
Thank you, everybody, for your, for your time and for your input this evening. It's much appreciated.
And I would just like to add that if people want to save the chat, you can actually do that, and then you will have the links in the comments. If you just go right up to the top, and there's usually just three little dots, and you click on that, and it says save chat. I don't know, it saves it in different places on different computers, but then you can search for, I think it's a, it's called, it's got the word Zoom in it somewhere.
Thank you, Alice. Excellent suggestion.
All right, everybody. Have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.
You, same to you. Bye bye.